Alrighty. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press and posted on the municipal bulletin board. All notices are on file with the Planning Board Secretary. Fire exits are located on east and west sides of the council chambers, as well as the rear of the building. I would ask anyone with a cellphone or other device to kindly put it on silent mode for the duration of this meeting. Just as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded by AP-TV. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
January 11th, 2019. Here.
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 The agenda stands as it is, as it was advertised. We'll go through that after we finish the approval of the minutes. There's one change for the minutes for January 28, 2019, that I'd like to suggest, is that there's a Section C in the executive session where it says possible, it says right above, "Motion to go into an executive session." I think that the part that says, "A written resolution adopted by the Board for the executive session," should come before the fact that we actually have the executive session. So that's the only thing that I'm going to ask for it to be changed. Outside of that, I don't know if anybody else has any changes for the minutes? Okay.
Motion to approve the minutes with that recommended change.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Why don't we just go through the fact that we're going to have, right now, we're going to have the referral from Mayor and Council, Resolution 2018-396, a review of the amendment to the Central Business District Plan. But I'd like to just get this, a little bit of, you know, office work here out of the way, for 910 Fourth Avenue. We've, actually, the attorney asked us to carry it to March 25th, so we'd like to have a motion to carry that.
So move.
Second.
Without further notice.
Without further notice.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and the only, and the other application we're going to have today is 1112 and 1114 Main Street, Block 285, lots 18 and 19, the R-Bar LLC. So our first presentation is by Michelle Alonzo for the resolution.
Please introduce yourself. You are the owner of the city of California during these proceedings. Would you introduce your name and your affiliation, please? Michelle Alonzo, Director of Planning and Redevelopment for the City of Asbury Park. I'm also a licensed professional planner. Thank you. Good evening, Planning Board members. I'm here to continue the presentation that we had begun and discussed at the last meeting regarding various amendments to the CBD plan. However, there is a small change tonight. We had received an email today from the redeveloper, who had made the request for the hotel amendment. They are requesting that both the planning board and the council not consider the hotel amendment at this time. So I'm going to ask that we honor that request and we do not review that section of the plan amendments I presented last month. However, if you remember, I had included other amendments to the CBD plan. Some of them were housekeeping items, and one addressed penthouses at the top of buildings in the CBD plan, and then the third item was to address retail as an accessory used to restaurant bar. So if everyone still, I hope everyone has the referral from council in their packet tonight.
Just, just, I'm sorry. Just one thing, should we make note that Trudy Syfax has, is here?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
I have the resolution and Exhibit A, which is the plan amendment, designated as Exhibit C1 from 1719. Has it ever changed?
No, it hasn't.
So that's what you were going to say.
But what I would like to do very quickly is go through the pages of what is going to be struck, because what was part of that hotel amendment and what is, was not. So Page 1 stays, which is the correction for Block and Lot. Page 2, the Block and Lot corrections stay. The red bullet with the paragraph is eliminated because that's part of hotel.
Is that in its entirety?
Yes. Page 3, the bullet about maximum height is to be eliminated for hotel use. That would be the third full bullet on that page. But the next bullet about penthouses is to remain, and as with the two amendments, as we had discussed at the last meeting, which changes 10 feet to 20, and verifies that's a residential or an office use.
So would you rather have questions as you go, or would you rather have them later?
It's up to you, Chairwoman.
Okay. Just, can you just repeat once again? It says here that it's, the setback is at least 10 feet.
Right.
Are you saying that, that you're changing that to 20?
I'm changing it to 20 based on what the Board had recommended at the last meeting. I assume that's the route we still wanted to go, unless you all say otherwise.
I know, because we have had other presentations that have stated that they were 20, and I just want to make sure that if we want to stay consistent with that, or if anybody objects. If not, then let's go with 20. Okay?
Then, the first paragraph for parking, there was two changes to this paragraph. One is to strike out the words "the cost of a structured parking stall," because, I'll state again, I believe this was omitted in a past amendment, and should say "the calculated parking impact fee" is codified in City Ordinance 2-87. The other amendment I had made was at the discretion of the planning board, and I think this Board had not come to a conclusion whether you want to keep that language.
I had suggested that if you use that language, it's, the ordinance would be void for vagueness because it doesn't set a standard that the planning board would have to adopt. Planning Board can't, without criteria being established, can't tell an applicant if they come in and they say, "We would like to contribute to the parking fund per the ordinance." Planning Board can't say, "No, you have to provide onsite parking, or you have to provide parking elsewhere unless there's some standard that we have to adopt." And so this is uniformly enforced by all applicants, same criteria. So is it, is it the intent that it's no longer the option of the applicant to?
That the applicant can propose to pay into the parking fund.
Right.
But that's at the discretion of the planning board, whether they would accept that payment or if they would consider the lack of parking a variance.
Oh, so you're giving the Board the discretion to either grant a variance from that requirement or allow payment?
Yes. Yes.
Really?
Or not grant, meaning that it gives, that the Board can determine if it's a variance and a, and that the solution would be to pay into the parking fund if they so want to grant the variance, or that they would make it a requirement that the applicant has to provide the onsite or offsite parking, but provide parking in the district.
But that, in and of itself, that proposal, when would the Board be allowed to grant a variance versus require the onsite parking?
There seems to be no criteria for us to make that decision.
There's no criteria for the Board to use, so it's void for vagueness under constitutional law.
Same kind of random arbitrary.
So if you're going to give the Board that discretion, which can be very difficult because each applicant that comes in, you're better off making it a more stringent standard, and from a planning perspective, I would think, and from a legal perspective. But you can't give the Board the discretion to say, "No, we won't give you the variance in this case. You have to provide onsite parking or parking elsewhere in the CBD zone," without criteria that they could use to make that decision.
Well, one of the things, Jack, that I was kind of thinking about, and it's up to the Board also, just to kind of talk about this, is that, that there seems to be about three different ways that we can handle these things. Is to say, "Okay, you pay into the fund," or "You create the space that we need," or we say that, and if they can't create the space, then it's kind of like saying, is there, do we treat anything differently that says, you know what? In some cases, 80 spaces are needed, they create 10.
Right.
That's like, that's an egregious difference. It's not like, more than 10%, it's not more than 20%. You know, there's some, there's something that we could like hang our hat on and say, "You know what, if it's more than this, you really have to find someplace to do this."
Well, then the criteria should be in the ordinance.
Okay.
That says, if you provide 90% of the onsite spaces, then you can pay into the parking fund for 10% difference. If you can't, you know, you need some form of measurement so that every applicant coming in knows what they are in for, and your criteria is objective versus subjective.
So that criteria would be in the redevelopment plan? That's what you're saying?
It would have to be in the ordinance.
In this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The ordinance, because this is an amendment to the redevelopment.
Right.
Yes. Yes, it would.
I mean, what are, what are the thoughts of something like that?
I think it's, I think it's a fine idea. I think we need to think about what that number is.
And is that, is that something that, that this Board wants to take on? That we put that kind of criteria on?
Without some form of study that will give you a basis for the criteria.
Right.
Just creating criteria without some, without data.
No, I understand.
No.
I understand.
Just trying to give you guidance. So, yeah, because what this comes down to is a subjective standard, which won't work. It has to be an objective standard.
And this is something that we can continue to work on, because I, but this is in response to some of the sentiment that I've heard from the Board, that they feel locked into having to accept payment of lieu for sites that was felt, could have accommodated parking or could accommodate, could have had lesser units.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Yeah, I think in the past, it's been up to the developer to say, "Well, we can't provide the parking, we'll pay into the parking fund." We couldn't say no because the ordinance was written such a way that they're allowed to do that.
Well, the thing is, the way it's written is they don't even have to look for parking. You can just pay into the fund.
Right. So I think, you'd say, "Well, if you can't provide, if you can't provide 60% of your parking," or something, I mean, there definitely has to be some level that we can say that every developer knows, if they can't provide this amount of parking, then they're going to be accountable and have to pay.
I think that if we, if we can continue to work on that, that piece of it, then I think that's fair, if we can move on.
Why don't we?
And we can, we can say that a certain amount of our Board members that we're allowed to have, to have this discussion, and we can present, and we can have that discussion with you.
How about if we remove that element from this particular ordinance, the parking at this point, and study it?
I'm, it's, I have the same criticism of wherever it allows the discretion of the planning board. Throughout, there's a number of pages, because you, in order to be consistent, you have to change to an objective standard.
Well, on this, on this particular page on the parking, there's at least three other, or two other instances.
Right. Right. So it's those three at this point, let's see.
Should we just remove this section at this time?
Well, we're striking the words at the discretion of the planning board, because we're going to leave the calculate impact fee is codified in City Ordinance, because that's a language clarification.
That's reality.
Does it really change anything?
No. That's just a clarification.
If that's the case, then why don't we say, where it says the developer may have the option, why don't we just say, "The developer shall have the option of contributing," rather than "may" and require it if he can't give us the parking. Well, that's a given.
Well, it's in effect, it's already.
It's already there. If they can't provide the parking, they have to pay into the fund.
Well, it says, "Developer may," and I'm just saying, "Developer should," or "shall."
Oh, oh, okay.
Like, "May" isn't a question, as an option, and "shall" is.
Either way, it's, the next words are "have the option," so.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And if you slice out, if you edit that last line, you're back to where you are now, essentially.
Right.
So there's been no change, which is up to you, and it's up to the council.
Well, there's really not much sense in putting something in here that is, could be challenged down the road and create problems for the city.
Oh, absolutely. I agree.
Okay, so we're just going to, in the next paragraphs, remove "at the discretion of the planning board," because the others changed the words "cost of structured parking stall" to "calculated impact fee." Then the last paragraph about hotel, we're going to strike. Then skip to the next, the next page with red, with red type. We're going to keep the language about building penthouses, but again, make that same change to 20 feet, and add the words "office and residential." So now, here's, here's a good question now, because now the next section, parking standards, this is for the, for the CB, this is for the Cookman Avenue Corridor. Right now, the Cookman Avenue Corridor does not permit payment into the parking fund. Do you want it to remain as such, that you cannot pay into the parking fund if you're on the Cookman Corridor, that you must provide parking in another section of the CBD mixed-use district?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. So then we're going to strike the language that permits parking into the fund.
Say that again.
I'm sorry.
So right now, there's one sub-district in the CBD district that does not let you pay into the parking fund, and that's Cookman Avenue Corridor. I was amending it to allow people to be able, pay into the fund, along with the language at the discretion of the planning board. Right now, the way it reads it is that it's 1.5 spaces required per unit to be provided offsite within the CBD mixed-use district. That's the language in the plan now. Do we want that language to remain? And you cannot pay into the fund.
What, I, this probably is a question you can't answer, but what was the rationale behind having that sub-district not be able to pay into a fund?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure if it was an omission.
Yeah.
Or if it was the idea that new construction, because one thing we know, you can't provide parking on Cookman.
Right.
That's clear in this.
No curb cut.
No curb cut, and the, most of the sites cannot accommodate parking.
Right.
So the idea, it just was that you, so you must provide it somewhere else in the CBD.
Okay.
Maybe because it was the thought that, that our predecessors knew that nothing could be provided onsite in that zone.
Well, I think we should revisit that, maybe after we develop the standard for the other payment and load parking, because I don't know if it's necessarily fair to the Cookman Ave developers in particular, that they don't have that same option that other developers in the CBD have. That's just my thought.
I agree with you.
Okay. All right, then, towards the bottom of the page, we have two Block and Lot clarifications. Then on the next page is the part that talks about 527 Lake Avenue, and that they may have retail and service special events within the restaurant use. That's the language I had added. Is that language that you would like to keep?
It's, once again, I believe that we had had a discussion about the special events that normally would have to be approved by City Council. There are certain events that obviously have, that go into the, right away, that they will have to go to council if they have special events. I'm concerned about rooftop events that happen here. I don't think that we put anything in here around those events that we'd had a discussion about.
I think that's what that's saying, is that at that specific Block and Lot, they may have retail and service special events.
Right. They may have those events, but what if those events infringe on the people that live around them?
Right.
We have issues with that, so what happens there?
Right. So then I guess the question is, do we add a clause that says, "Subject to approval of some other body?"
The issue is that it's not inside, but if it's outside on the rooftop, that's where our concerns are. Dates, times, that's where we get into a situation. Right?
Right.
That's what we were really concerned about.
Well, if you want to go forward with it today, you can talk about, we, I'm trying to look for something for Jack. We can, we can add, "and must comply with the sound mitigation portion of this redevelopment plan."
Absolutely.
Yeah, but sound isn't the only issue.
Sound.
It's only one of many.
Hmm?
Sound mitigation is only one of many issues.
All right, because remember that we've had them come in front of us, and they were supposed to be coming in the next few weeks, to, with a list of events that they want to have on the rooftop. And now, if we, I don't know what happens to that list if we say, "Oh, it's okay."
Well, because my concern is the way the plan amendment for the Beer Garden was written, it was written so narrowly, that my concern was that you could not have any form of accessory retail. Or, here's the thing, you would have to deem that retail accessory to that restaurant use.
But is that only inside, the four walls, or does that include the rooftop?
It would include the rooftop because this redevelopment plan permits the continuation of the use on a rooftop. Or I should say, doesn't limit it. As you know, other parts of the redevelopment plan, that mixed-use districts specifically say retail on the ground floor. You can also say that in this, "May have retail and special, and service special events within the restaurant use." Actually, but I believe you guys permitted the, you know, the Christmas market on the roof.
We did.
Right.
That was a very specific approval, along with the igloos. We did that as a very specific approval. What I'm concerned about is that if we approve this, is that what about any other kind of event that they have on the roof?
Typically, in zoning ordinance, we usually define what are accessory uses, correct?
Well, except that with this plan set, no, the more, the thing that's more typically used is uses that are incidental and accessory, and the word, the key word being incidental. And that's why I thought there was more of a comfort level adding this language in here about specifically permitting retail as part of the restaurant use, because you can say that maybe certain types of retail are not incidental to a restaurant use.
Problem is, we run into the same exact problem we've run into before, that it's from a legal perspective. I get where you're, what you're saying, and it sounds good. However, in a legal perspective, when an applicant comes in and says, "We want to do X," we believe it to be incidental and accessory to what we're doing. The Board says, "Well, we don't think so." And you say, "Well, what criteria are you using to decide whether or not it's incidental and accessory?"
But, and I completely understand that, but one of the, and, you know, the applicant, the applicant had come in with the concern that if we start listing what was permitted, and a new idea came upon us, then that would be it. That new idea couldn't be implemented.
The problem, okay, that, but that's, that's unfortunately the way the system works with the law, because if we go with a vague incidental and accessory use, we define it one way with one application, and we wind up defining it another way with another application, we're right back where we started.
But.
So I typically, the applicant is looking at things from a commercial perspective.
Mm-hmm.
I understand that, that there's a businessman side of it, but from a legal perspective, it has to be, there has to be some standards, because if there isn't, you're always going to run the risk of, it's incidental and accessory with this application, but not with the next one. What are your, what's, if I were an applicant's attorney, I could, I could have a real good time if that clause is going to come before the Board and on an appeal.
I do want to say, though, that incidental and accessory is very standard language in ordinances, and I'm not saying that, you know, we're, you know, I'm hesitant to just strike that language itself out of this, but saying that I would prefer then we address this at another time.
Okay.
But this Board has already made a determination that a Christmas market is incidental and accessory to the restaurant use, because the Board permitted it.
Right.
Right. We would, but I think that what the Board was concerned about, and if anyone corrects me if I'm wrong here, it's really all about noise, the times that it's available. Noise and safety, like, for example, like the igloos, we were concerned about safety of them being secured properly, and, you know, whether it's, the heaters are inside, whether they're not inside, whether there's, what's going on there. That's what we were concerned about, in that there are not bands that start, that we start having a concert on the, on the top of the Beer Garden at all hours.
But she.
So that's what, that's the kind of thing.
I understand, but, and I want to, yeah, let's, let's, you know, talk about this, because I think, I think I'm not, you know, making myself perfectly clear, because I do want to say the igloos do hold the restaurant use in it.
Yes.
Or the primary use that is permitted, and that the, and I also want to clarify that the applicant did receive approvals to have bands up there as part of her initial application, just to make, make that clear. So that was already considered accessory.
Wasn't she limited with what she had to put on that roof? Not just, she couldn't, wasn't there some type of limitation?
Yeah, with, with times, days.
Because she complied with the sound mitigation requirement of this plan, but also the time requirement was put upon her by the previous Board, meaning that there's nothing codified about the hours. So rather, you know, in, because of limited time, let's strike this language, and let's move on. So then, this is, again, we're going to strike at the bottom of the page at the discretion of the planning board, and we're going to keep the clarifying language, "Calculated So then, the last page, the implementation of redevelopment plan, we're going to strike all the red language because it's all about hotel. So I hope that was clear. Does the Board have any additional questions?
So this has to go back to the council?
Yes.
Right?
Yeah, we, the Board is tasked to give review and make recommendations back to the council.
Okay. Any Board have anything else? Any questions? Any public questions? Oh?
One comment rather than a question. I would love to see a new copy of the final changes.
Sure.
I mean, we've got so much marked up here, and I understand, and I try to follow through and mark this up again as we discuss it, but I'd love to see it.
Of course.
Yeah, that would make sense.
Of course.
Because that way, if we do that, get that, we make sure that the items that are stricken or changed are what the Board understands at the beginning.
Yeah.
Then I'll make that new, new ordinance, new amendments as an exhibit to the Board's resolution.
Right, that's easy.
Yeah.
And I'll.
That's better than trying to go through a whole list.
No, of course, and I'll, and I will distribute it myself to the Board.
Sure.
Okay, and would that be something that we would just, can we do that like at the next meeting and get this done? next meeting and get this done? I mean, because, because I'm just asking, would that be something that just comes up, and you give us the copy of whatever it is, you come that day, and...
I feel like it's fine, I distribute it, because this point, I feel like I can email it. If there's something that is erroneous, you can correct it as part of the resolution review.
Okay.
So, I believe that we can do it that way, so that Mr. Serpico can move forward to write the resolution.
All right, so then are we saying that this is something that we're allowed to vote on, and then, within the resolution that Mr. Serpico writes, that if something isn't what, as we understand it, then that negates it?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anything else from the board that, any questions? No? Any questions from the public? No questions from the public? Any open for public comments?
Move it.
Any public comment? All right, move to close, public comment.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, I move that we refer to council, the findings of today's testimony, and with the changes that were agreed upon.
My second.
Ms. Emily Clayton?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Michael Liam Allen?
Yes.
Judge Sifat?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Your neighbor?
Yes.
Robert Cooper?
Yes.
And Jim Henry.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Henry, I should take him before the chair. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
All right, we're good.
I should call Jim before the chair.
Just as long as it's not late for dinner.
I know it is.
Okay, we have our next applicant, Arbar LLC. Good evening.
My name is Dana Kelly, attorney from Annaphe, New Jersey, representing the applicant, Arbar A.P. LLC in this matter. The applicant was originally scheduled to...
Just one second, can you just tell us your qualifications? Because I don't remember ever seeing you before.
I'm an attorney.
Ah, so we don't need to give you, you don't have to have any qualifications.
Yes.
That's right. Okay.
As I was saying, the applicant was originally scheduled this evening for a public hearing for preliminary and final major site plan approval with variance relief. Subsequent to the meeting, I had a discussion with Mr. Serpico. The applicant discovered some errors on their plans that may impact some of the variances that may be requested. So, what we are asking of the board this evening is, in lieu of conducting the public hearing, that we treat this matter as an informal workshop, since we all got dressed up and ready to, ready to present to you.
That's fine, we just request that you move it along.
We will, we will keep it brief and get you out.
Since we're going to convert this to a, more of an informal, no one has to be under oath, nothing is binding, but a good discussion will be beneficial to all.
Okay. So, is there, in a situation like this, is there also, there's, we're also, we also open for public questions?
Yes, I would suggest that, because somebody in the board can have a good point.
Yep, absolutely. Okay.
It makes sense.
Okay. Just briefly to summarize, the site presently consists of a restaurant and bar, and five residential units located in two separate buildings. There's two buildings that are the subject of the application. There are three residential units above the existing restaurant bar, and there is an adjoining multifamily dwelling that has four, two units with four bedrooms, excuse me. Also, in that residential building, on the basement floor, is part of the restaurant for the bar. So, it's a little hard to follow the dots with these two buildings, they're not technically separate entities. It's the applicant's intent to remove the pre-existing non-conforming residential dwelling, and to, that will allow for the expansion and renovation to the existing bar restaurant. The restaurant is a permitted use in the Main Street redevelopment area and community shopping zone. And in addition to some of the errors that we've identified, since we made the initial submission, there are also some architectural features that we are revisiting, and we would very much like the board's input on some of those changes.
Okay.
Okay. So, our first witness, not witness, our first presenter this evening, I would just like briefly to bring the general manager and representative of the applicant up to describe the vision of the restaurant and her experience, so, Ms. Kelly Victor.
Hi, guys. I'm Kelly Victor. I live at 511 Cookman Ave. in Asbury Park. I worked in the town of Asbury for almost 15 years. I've opened numerous bars in Asbury and throughout the state. This would be my first venture on my own, along with my business partner, Lindsay Taylor, who has also opened multiple bars in Asbury, a part of me. So, it's been our dream to open our own place, and we travel together all the time. So, our vision was just like, we go traveling, we find these amazing spots to eat, and we were like, what if we brought like a little bit of this home with us, and we would never have to go away? It's like a permanent vacation. We love like local bars, like influences, so, one of our favorite spots is Louisiana, and they have, so I've been there 26 times. I, we found this spot called Bacchanal, it's off the Beaton Path. We spend most of our time exploring the surrounding town, so like Chauvet, and Meryne, and Garden District, we stay away from French Quarter, pretty much, you know. So, there's a place called Bacchanal, so to the right, right here, that's where the existing house is. We would have a wine bar and cheese shop, so you would walk in and pick out whatever wine you want, pick out whatever cheese you want, pick out whatever meat you want, so you're not getting like a pre-made plate, you pick out what you want, so you don't get like stinky cheese, if you don't want stinky cheese. So, we would ring you up, you would find your way into, oh, I should get these out, right?
Yes.
So, the concept there is you go in, buy your wines, meat, and cheese, and you would go into the backyard patio area. So, it's kind of just like a backyard hangout. Sort of like people having, like having people over at your own house, hanging out in the backyard, pretty chilled. We would also want to build this beautiful greenhouse, we'd like to call it. It would be year-round, tempered, obviously this would not be, so it would just be up here, that would be year-round, closed, no license under. The inside of the bar would just be your normal, regular neighborhood bar. We're going for locals, we feel like we know what's missing in town, and, you know, when we set out on finding our own place, we really wanted to like go off the Beaton Path, we didn't want to be in Cookman or the boardwalk, we actually looked on the west side, we couldn't find a pocket license, so we came across Cascada, and we thought it was perfect for our vision. We really wanted to like have the locals have a place to go, you know, get away from the craziness of Cookman and the beachfront. I've spoken to many neighbors, and they're all excited to have a place to walk to. We're really encouraging like walking, biking, to go along with the Main Street redevelopment plan. Hi.
It's informal, so you can come up. The whole point was to be a neighborhood bar, so it was to basically bring the locals that were around that area to come in and walk up to, relax, and just be comfortable. It wasn't to be any kind of dancing, it wasn't to be any kind of other, it was just supposed to be a nice, relaxed restaurant and bar.
Yeah, it goes from like a very casual bar to a beautiful dining room, to the backyard and the rooftop, so there's a little something for everyone. It's going to be an everyday place, you can eat brunch, lunch, dinner. I've noticed a lot of places in town are closed, like we want to be open seven days a week, we want to be open for breakfast, lunch, dinner. Options for lunch are kind of limited, how I've noticed recently, and...
Yeah, we just want it to be for everybody.
We really did.
It was meant to be in layers, it was meant to be a casual spot, you find another nook where you can kind of go on a quiet date, you can also go and dress up and go into the greenhouse, or you can be in flip flops off the beach and go into the backyard and have a nice casual, laid-back moment.
I'm sorry, ma'am, could you just make...
Lindsay Taylor. You got it.
What kind of cuisine did you envision?
Comfort.
Okay.
Definitely comfort.
You can go like seven times a week.
Even though we... We encourage you to.
So, so, from what I, from what I understand, I mean, though that's a lovely rendering, I'm kind of thinking it doesn't look like that in that, it looks like we're on the beach, but we're not. You know, where those two ladies, or whoever they are?
That's a side elevation.
So, this is our side alley, so the fence will be on there.
Right, that's, that's in the side alley, that's on your land.
Yep.
Correct.
So, are the stairs the side alley, or...
No, they're, if you look in the plan, they're right here. It's a side alley.
Okay, all right, so we'll, we'll get to that.
You want maybe, Jeff can, we have our architect here that maybe can walk you through the...
I'm, I'm fine with you just going with your flow, I'll catch up, don't worry about it.
And one of the things we do want to note, with regard to the addition and the square footage of the addition, a significant portion of the additional square footage that they're putting in here is kitchen space. I'm not sure how many people are familiar with Cascada. It kind of over time turned more into a nightclub atmosphere, and drifted away from any type of, you know, good food, and they are putting an emphasis on this being a restaurant.
We have experience with nightclubs, and we want nothing to do with them, never again.
Okay, so, perhaps Jeff can walk us, our architect, yeah, can walk us through.
Assistant?
Yeah, you can.
Thank you.
You're available for questions.
Yeah, available for questions.
Tell me the last three names.
Oh, the various predecessors do, yeah.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Wells, I'm a licensed architect, senior jersey. Good evening. Just to quickly go through the floor plan, the main entry, which is shown in the regular and the arch opening, you enter into the area which was once a nightclub, and we transformed it into a bar area with seating along the bar and tables. And adjacent to the table area, we have a more intimate seating area with a, I guess, fireplace, which, what we're trying to do is make, give you different varying experiences of dining, from the bar adjacent experience to a more intimate area. In the back, we have the existing ones, the existing restrooms, and as we walk through the dining area, we can enter into the wine and cheese bar. Behind the wine and cheese bar, we have the large generous kitchen, which shows the commitment of the owner to better food or fine cuisine, as opposed to a bar like said. You walk through the kitchen, and you can access the back for service, and the kitchen is designed so that...
Sorry?
Is that you enter the kitchen, you exit...
Can you turn that easel a little bit? I have audience members.
Okay. You exit...
It's a bit more...
Yes.
Where should we do this? TV's working. For TVs.
You exit the kitchen area after serving, into the restaurant seating area, and everything that is being returned to the kitchen exits, enters into the back, and the key to the client's mission is to have good food and good service and efficiency. From the wine bar, you can exit down the alley to the back seating area, or up the stairs to a rooftop bar and rooftop seating area.
Do we have, do we have the rendering of the side elevation of the, because I think Madam Champion person had a question, was having trouble oriented, I'm not sure if you've got your orientation now.
So, this is the Main Street elevation, and this is the Nally elevation. This is the back bar, the back dining area, as seen from the rooftop bar in the back. So, to quickly go over the elevations, we're proposing stripping the building of the dry bit, removing the stone existing. As alluded to, we're going for a Louisiana, more Southern Comfort, we're going to, we're proposing putting shut, a shutter screen on the building, and we're going to be replacing the existing windows with high-efficiency windows. We're taking away the stone at the bottom, putting, stuck up. We have the copper canopy, the articulation of the existing entrance. This is the entrance to the dwelling above, and this is the addition here, with wood siding and cast metal pergola with the conservatory closure for the bar above, and you can see that.
Jeff, I just want to take a step back to, you pointed out the entrance to, as we mentioned, there are existing apartments above the restaurant right now. In our initial submission, we proposed for all three of those apartments to remain, but in the design, we've come to realize that it's not feasible for one of them, because of the construction of the addition, we'll be eliminating the windows, so what we're going to do is eliminate that additional residential unit and convert it into storage for the, for the bar. So, we'll have only two out of the, out of the five residential units remaining.
Will you come back to the floors? Three plans for the second floor, so we can see that.
Sure. We actually have them, would you like to see them now, or you want, okay. I'm sorry, Jeff, go ahead.
The side, the side elevation that shows the articulation of the dining area with the cast metal detail, the conservatory housing the bar, and the pergola in the back. We have the side entrance, which is ADA warning to the wine bar, we have a covered stair going to the, to the second floor, covered stairs coming out to the back.
That is a change to the plans, that's one of the elements that we reconsidered. For safety reasons, we've decided that putting a covered awning over the staircase would be safer for pedestrians.
And there is a lift in the back.
Yeah, it's an ADA lift in the back.
Did y'all have a chance to look over the planners' report?
We did.
So, one of my concerns or points is transparency for that, for the Main Street district? Have they given any thought to putting more infestation on the ground floor, just adjacent to the entry and the restaurant? And so, I'm looking at the plans, and it seems like there's a lot of wall space, so there maybe, there could be some more...
Well, I believe there's closets on the other side of those walls right now, and they're proposed to remain, as well as, we have that vestibule for the apartment, so there's not much we can do there, that middle door that you see. Jeff?
It looks like there is wall space, as you walk in, there's a wall before you come to the stairs, and then also... And then also in the restaurant, you walk it up, there's a closet to the left and then the coatroom to the, coat checks to the right. But there was still some wall space there. There may be some, some, you know, transparency could be added to that. The idea is just to create some pedestrian, a lot of the pedestrian experience. Like the wine bar's really nice, it's all the glass and everything.
Right.
So it seems to kind of maybe, just to think about if you could work with that as well on the, on the existing.
We could certainly explore that. Would, would the board consider if, if we have, you know, objects on the other side such as closets, would, it, does it have to be completely, you know, could it be frosted glass or something like that to...
Yeah, I mean, you know, some kind of, just to create some kind of visual interest here, so it's not just a long blank wall.
Jeff, did you have anything else? We do have an art...
Do you want to discuss the signs or at this point?
We can, yes. That would be fine. We, we are proposing sign variances. You know, the Main Street Development Zone allows for one sign. In this type of a situation, it's really not feasible. We're looking for the one sign on the exterior of the building and two menu board signs so that the people could see what the cheese, you know, bar has to offer and the restaurant. You want to, can you just point them out for us?
This is the way the sign over here, which is the plan for, here's a picture of it from the side.
And then the menu boards are...
And then the menu boards are located on the addition here. And on the existing building.
So the, the various, this, this entire thing is functioning as one unit, right? There's not various, it's not like there's a wine and cheese bar separate from the restaurant. It's...
They're all inter...
Interconnected.
Yes.
Right here, when you go to the back of the wine bar, there'll be an entrance into here.
Okay.
We'd had to be in the back because this is the front area is where the stairs are to the apartments upstairs. So we had to move towards the back to connect the buildings.
And then above the wine bar, that greenhouse is intended to be the same thing. You can take a drink or food from either area upstairs.
Yes, correct.
The stair is in the rear.
Gotcha.
Also, one of the things in the report was the lift in the back. Have y'all given some consideration to what their recommendation was? Because that does seem really problematic for someone that would need it. Have to, the, the route to get there to get up to the second floor.
Well, so actually you can just come in right here. And there's an alley that has a ramp and it will be like right here.
Right, but we're not somebody that's actually in the restaurant that wants to decide to go out to the, they have to go out to the front?
No, no, no. So they can go through, in a restaurant, they can go through and there'll be an exit through the back. You go out the back door and it's right here, right?
Right. No, that's just for this, the...
That's just for service.
But so I just want to clarify that what she just said is correct, that they can access the ADA lift from inside the building in the back.
You can go out the back, you can go out the back door and into the lift on the backyard. The roof is accessible only through exterior staircases. Yes. So the public, the general public is going outside to get to the roof just as well as a headway. Chrissy, will you just identify yourself for the, sorry. Chrissy Skubak.
I'm sorry?
Chrissy Skubak. Can you spell it? S-K-U-B-A-C-K.
Thank you. We had to toss you one tough name.
So this is an informal hearing.
Correct.
So I'm not asking these questions tonight. I'm not looking for answers.
Okay.
The next meeting.
Okay.
So, outdoor music and lighting?
No music proposed outside.
Okay. I wasn't looking for answers. Just heading up for the next.
Sorry.
The rare neighbors going east, how close are they to the end of your entertainment zone?
Their physical house or their backyard? Their backyard is a grade on the other side, but their house is more towards lots of measure.
Actually, I think we can get you that answer, but we also do have an air, back garden. You have the aerial.
Right, I, I, okay, it looks like a lot of vegetation.
Yes.
How high will the exhaust be from the kitchen so we don't have neighbors complaining about the smell from the restaurant when the wind's blowing east? Not looking for the answers tonight.
It's going to be on the roof of the restaurant building, so two stories high with no visual frequency.
Because we have had complaints about restaurants polluting neighborhoods with exhaust. And then, it didn't come up yet tonight, but I had concerns about the agreement with the parking across the street. I think that's something we're going to have to refine is what happens if that building's sold? Because rumor is it's going to be sold. Rumor is that he has a three-year contract and has been sued because he can't let anybody else park there. And that's been on Nextdoor and everything else. So we're going to have to solidify that parking arrangement just because the dry cleaner says nobody can park there and you're saying you can park there and you're saying you're open seven days a week and he's open five days a week. So how does that work?
In line with that, we had previous applications, for sure, that parking for a commercial use on Third Avenue was extended over towards that area. Make sure there's no conflicting parking agreements for that property.
Yes, we will, we'll look into both of those things. We've also, just so the board knows, we are actively looking for parking. As we all know, it's, it's a challenge, especially on Main Street to, to find parking. I will provide testimony that despite the addition of the square footage and everything that we are proposing from an occupancy standpoint, because this is a restaurant and will be conducted as such, the occupancy level is actually being reduced from the previous nightclub use.
Okay, good. No problem, I like it.
Okay.
Right, good. And I think that also, when you come back, having a discussion about the lighting of that glass structure to, because of the neighbors, how are we going to prevent that? I know that there was also a discussion in one of these reports having to do with the trees that exist.
The trees are to remain. The trees will remain.
I like that, that courtyard, the trees.
Yes.
It's like the chairs that you're burying in the...
What, what kind of materials are being proposed right now for like, for example, the ground floor, that black, is it a...
You want the stockpile?
A stockpile? Oh, so, okay. Because I think the current upper floors are stockpile, right?
We did a sample, like, cement outside in the paint that we'd be using it.
Does the restaurant that inspired you to create this have trees that grow eat? Are you sick?
Yes. You've been there?
Yeah.
Is, is the design of the, the top, the, looking like shutters? Is that the color of that? What you're...
That is what we're proposing.
I do have a sample one in the car if you want me to...
That's okay. I wanted to find out if it's, if this is, and are you willing to make any modifications if the board sees fit?
Yeah, we can look that up.
With something like that, if, we have a design review committee that meets prior to the, the session, every first planning board session of the month. So if you want to come in and if there's, we can have a discussion if you would like our opinion ahead of time.
Yes.
And if you, if you don't, that's okay too. But you're, but we are available if you would like that, if you'd like to take advantage of that opportunity.
Yes. Yeah, I have obviously been...
And that's an informal session.
Yep. Up and down and I just feel like, not, not the color per se, but I just feel like this really goes with all like the really old homes on like Third and Fourth and Fifth. I just feel like, you know.
It's like a team.
I don't know if this came up already, but I give some consideration to bicycle parking just given your clientele demographic. I think...
Yeah, because your recommendation in one of the reports tomorrow.
Well, I was also wondering...
But maybe even off street, just because Main Street's pretty pinched right there.
There's, on the corner of Fourth and Main, there's this like little patch of grass. And I've seen like, there's one in front of Brickwall that went up, a bike rack.
Oh, right.
So I was wondering if one of those, I don't know how you get approval for that, but if one of those could fit up.
Talk to him.
If you get the one on the corner, it's a perfect spot right there.
Yeah, I think once Main Street's reconstructed, we can consider that.
That's why we were not sure what was already proposed. We haven't been able to get a hit.
Right now, so that, just for background, the city has a TAP grant to install bike racks, street trees and benches on Main Street. So that's something that we could consider as part of that.
Okay, great. We have our engineer here. I'm not sure if there's much that we need to...
I can mention that for me to say. When is the, when is the, when is it supposed to be completed? Approximately 2020.
Yeah, the Main Street project won't be done till next year probably.
Okay. Get someone an idea of when, having to contend with all that congestion.
Right, right.
Where, where do you think that, where do you think you're going to have your staging area while this is being built and changed, do you think?
For the construction equipment?
When the construction is going to be done.
We've already been, we've already had conversations with the Mercy Center. And they've been very cooperative and they've agreed to work with us to, you know, let us remove their fence to access from, there's a park, there's a blacktop area right on the other side. So, yeah, we've tried as much as possible to communicate with the neighbors and the, you know, surrounding business owners to coordinate. It's something that everyone seems to be excited about and we hope you are too.
Yeah.
Yes.
And the Main Street's trying to see a lot of activity, it's really good.
Be a nice addition to the Main Street.
Yes.
And now, when you're having those discussions about the, the staging area and whatnot, just think about if you were taking away parking from your neighbor while they're allowing you to, to work in their driveway, are we taking away spaces from people that would be using in their, in their, in their driveway?
Okay.
And whatnot, so just, so we understand.
Yeah, we worked that out with their employees and the dry cleaner. Jeff said he would let his, their employees park there during the construction.
Just be careful. Careful like what the mayor said.
Very true. They also have a larger parking area and I think with our communication with them, we can make sure that everybody is safely, still able to get there.
Also within that, that dry cleaning area, be careful because that's an active driveway towards the business in the back.
Yes.
So you have to be careful with that too. So you can't use all the spaces because you can't get into that driveway.
Yes.
So caution.
Thank you.
Anything else that the board would like to ask?
Yeah, I have a quick question.
Sure.
On the, on the left-hand side, the, the rendering below the aerial shot?
The old building? Oh, this one?
Yes, that one. On the right-hand side, on your site plan, where is that particular?
That's the rear yard.
That's the rear yard.
That's behind, so the, the greenhouse, it's right behind the greenhouse.
I like, I like the rendering much better than I like the...
It looks like a...
Priorities.
Certainly looks a lot better.
Yeah.
Are you going to use stage props to get you that, the ambiance there?
Yes. And there are existing, just, you can probably see from the existing photographs, there are existing large freezers that are out there right now.
Yes.
And those will be relocated into the new basement area so that there's less mechanical stuff outside. There is a storage shed, well, there's an enclosure shown on the site plan. And just for some clarification, that is going to have no roof on it and that is merely for storing the outdoor furniture at various times. So that will remain graced on the bottom, open roofed, you know, pervious coverage there.
And when, and when you come back, think about the, how, you know, what, what your hours might be, that type of thing, just so that we, because obviously we're always concerned about it, the neighbors.
Yes.
Make sure that we're friendly to our neighbors.
Yes, absolutely.
I have one other comment. Jason, on your report, paragraph nine, I would, I would feel much more comfortable if you were the one making the determination as to what other items need to be shown on the site plan. You indicate that the...
Usually with that one, that's a lot of information, especially for a smaller project like this. But one thing I think is vital always is...
The fire hydrant. Yeah. Well, I would, I would say, I, I would feel more comfortable if you make that determination. Tell them what you want, have, have, put whatever you want on the plan.
Yeah, our engineer will, will call Jason and they'll have a conversation. But just so you know, there are fire hydrants on each corner. One is across the street on the Dollar Store side and the other one is on our side, but at the corners.
In front of Medusa.
Yeah.
In front of where?
Medusa.
Which is right, yeah, right across, right. Anything else from the board? Anything else from the public? Public like to speak?
Yes.
Could you go to the, the microphone even though it isn't formal?
And the gloves. Actually, you know, this looks really great. Our house is in your renderings, where the little little house.
Oh, good.
Oh, good, yes. Yeah. So, I think, you know, I actually think this looks really nice. What comes to mind are a few things. One is, you know, I hate to say it, but 50% of all businesses fail in five years. So what's here next if this doesn't go well? And, you know, currently there, there was an empty lot across the street on Main Street across from the previous business. And so people would park there at night and still, there's no parking in that area. I mean, there's none. There are cars in front of our neighbor's driveway all the time. We don't have a driveway. But it's very, very tight there. So, you know, I, I definitely hope the board really takes some, some serious consideration to that because, you know, I like the idea that people are going to ride their bikes, but there's no guarantee. And then I, I would just say, you know, being there, you know, we are really surrounded on two sides by this particular business. And, and also having the second floor, I mean, it's, that's our backyard. That's where we also would like to sit and have friends and enjoy our evenings as well. And so this feels, you know, it's, it's definitely kind of sitting on top of us, which is, it is certainly their property and prerogative to do that. But I would just really like, you know, some considerations to be thought about and perspectives of, you know, your neighbors are right on the other side of that and they don't always want there to be a party, although we do like a party. So, you know, that's what I would say.
I mean, like I said, we open our restaurant and have worked with surrounding neighbors before, so we're very open to work with you.
So your house is on Fourth Avenue, the, that section?
So is it on the, on the north side?
It's that blue house right here? Yeah. Yeah, you know, the major thing is that we are neighborly, so we were very cautious and we do not want to do anything that is going to disrupt the neighbors. So have that very much in mind. Yes, unfortunately, 50% of businesses do go out of business in five years. However, failure is not an option. It is, it's our first baby and it's not the first restaurant that we have brought up and kept successful. It is just the first one that we actually will be having our name on physically, you know, ourselves. But again, it's our bar and it's meant to be your bar and everyone's bar, neighborhood bar. It's not going to be a party. I'm 40 years old, I don't want to be at a party anymore. You know, I want to have fun, but respectful, respectful fun, you know, what we're trying to really do. And if there is any concerns, I gave it from Kelly Vickery, we can talk and work on it. Sir, can I have your name please?
Peter Powell.
Thank you.
Would anybody, does anybody else have any, from the public have any questions? Would they like to ask? Any comments?
Like New Orleans, there's your mom, it's our always friendly bars there.
Yes. Well, we, we also got the name from the Royal Street Inn, which is a neighborhood bar down there, so.
You have the friendly bar in there?
Mm-hmm. I love the friendly bar.
Yes, that's kind of a, like you please yourself.
All right, anything else? Anybody else from the public? Nothing?
Boy, thank you very much for the time this evening.
Best of luck.
Yes, yes.
Do you have any, do you have any idea, because we're going to have to, we make a motion as to when to carry this to?
Yes.
The, our next, our next availability is March 25th? Is that, is that doable?
Obviously, they were hoping for sooner, but we will certainly take that. And if you have any cancellations, give us a call.
Actually, we already have, we already have pre-scheduled for the 11th.
Okay.
And we have pre-scheduled for the second, for the 25th of, of February. So the next one available is March 25th.
Okay.
So...
But the design review will meet on the 11th.
The design review will meet on the, on March 11th. So if you'd like to come to that, tell us, we can put you in right now if you want to come.
Yes, please.
All right, so we'll put you in. So we'll say design review, uh, design review... So we'll say design review, a design review will be on the, on March 11th at 6 o'clock here.
Okay.
Okay? And then you'll be scheduled in for the 25th. Okay?
Okay.
Sorry? Is there a sec? Sorry?
I will not be here, so I will have another attorney present, just so you know.
If that's okay?
On my honeymoon.
That's, that's up to your client.
You'll be here.
Motion to carry this application to March 25th. With no further notice.
With no further notice.
With notice.
With notice.
With notice.
Who is the second? I'm sorry.
Me. Let's say that.
I said...
Okay, you're on. Okay?
Thank you very much.
All right. Okay. All right.
I know, I'll, I'll get it to you.
There is just one item that, that I'd like to just to bring up. It's just a continuation of a discussion that we have with the board. The other, our last session, having to do with figuring out what applications are outstanding and what might be impacted, impacted by any other...
Yes.
Anything else we pass. And I found that there was, there were two. One was 527 Bank, which we're actively airing. And the other one was 512 Summerfield, which was dismissed by the city. There was no escrow and there were no documents provided. So, so, so we have nothing that's outstanding. I do have, if anybody is interested, I do have the list of everything that we think is going to be coming.
Yes.
And everything that's closed that we know. So there you go.
Well done.
I, I provided you with one of those in your, while you were talking to Alexis. But you have one. There you go. There you go. And we did not add, feel free to add the, the DRC that we just put in. I, I can send this one out again if you'd like to via email so that everybody knows what's coming. I'll get one to you, Trudy. And I'll get one to our professionals too. Because I believe our professionals now have our agendas through March 25th. Please add to your agenda this application from March 25th. Okay?
I have one other...
Arbor.
Arbor, like they married. They said Dorpor.
Like I said, Royal Street Inn.
We're going to recuse you, you know.
There was one other item from last meeting and it was, I think, Jack, you were going to follow up on the site plan.
Or the committee.
Committee and whether or not it was required. And don't worry about it if you didn't follow up because...
I did, I'm sorry.
No, no, don't worry about it. But I think that we did need to meet, once we got that answer, the policies and procedures, bylaws committee. And the bylaws committee hasn't met.
Quick review of the ordinance and the bylaws and tell me if it's recorded.
Okay.
Yes, please. Okay? Anybody else? All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Aye.